Good evening, I'm Shannon Powell, co-founder of Indivisible Westchester. Thank you so much for joining us tonight. Right-wing politicians, conservative media, and radical activists are trying to turn us against schools and teachers as a way to sow division and advance their political agenda. We're going to explain how they're being successful, not just in places like Virginia, but right here in Westchester County, and explore what you at home can do to try and stop it. I'd like to introduce Rachel Cohen. She is a contributing writer for The Intercept and is also a freelance journalist who has covered this issue pretty extensively. And we are so lucky to have her moderating this event tonight. So Rachel, with that, I'm going to turn it over to you, and thank you so much.
Thank you, Shannon, and thank you for inviting me to moderate this panel. It's a very important and timely topic. In the world of education, the rise of these critical race theory bills have become sort of, you know, very quickly have become one of the top, if not the top, issue that we're all following. And yeah, I have been following this, you know, issue. I actually have a story coming out tomorrow in The American Prospect. I'm working on longer pieces. And so I'm really excited to be part of this conversation with a really diverse panel who think about these issues from different perspectives. I'm going to just quickly introduce our panelists. We have great panelists. Rebecca Jacobson, professor at Michigan State University. She studies school board politics, public opinion. She's really followed, long before CRT hit the headline, she's been following how school board politics become nationalized. I'm really excited she's here. Adam Lottz, he is a professor of education and history at Binghamton University. He has studied the history of these textbook wars and which go back a really long time. I'm very glad he is joining us. Judd Legum, he is a founder and author of Popular Information Newsletter. He has been following this day-to-day, done such great reporting on these issues specifically, but he's covered so many other issues. I've been reading him for years. And Dr. Jeanne Tewa is a social impact strategist who has been, has a lot of experience helping states and local organizations advance racial equity. She's been a leader and advocate and facilitator, working with all sorts of organizations from the National Urban League to the United Nations. And so I'm thrilled about the sort of perspectives we have here, and I think it's going to be just an awesome discussion. We, to start the discussion, I'm going to invite Professor Lottz to open it up and kind of help give us a little bit about historical context for sort of, please, help us understand how these bills kind of fit into war as we've seen in the past. This is, school board textbooks have long been a site of contention, and I think it would really help to help people like understand what's new, what's not new.
Sure, thank you very much, Rachel, and hello, everybody from the great frozen upstate New York. I would, I'd like to share a couple of stories and examples that I think really help show two points. One story from about 50 years ago, one from about a full century ago. And the first point is how similar a lot of these stories have been for, as Rachel said, for a long time, about 100 years. We can get a sense of deja vu, and I think that's not accidental. I think it helps us see why these issues remain so contentious in American society. The second lesson that I take away is who has won and who has lost and how in these battles over the last century. In the big picture, the long perspective, conservative activists have tended not to win in these attacks on public schools, although it always seems like they are winning. And in fact, they tend to lose on the actual issues, whether it's fighting to obscure US history or science or, you know, sexual education, sex ed education, that kind of thing. They tend to lose. How they win is by spreading fear among teachers, parents, students, and administrators. And part of that fear comes directly from making issues confusing. And I don't mean to suggest that this is any sort of long-term conspiracy or a big plan. Rather, it's a kind of, at least in the past, it has been a tactic of desperation that activists have found themselves using. It's a sort of end game when other tactics don't work to sort of flip up the table, the chessboard, and win by making the game impossible to play. So when we see school board meetings disrupted, when we see regular functioning of school administration disrupted, that's something that we've seen for 100 years, and it's something that I've called elsewhere a politics of petulance. So let me, let me tell just a couple of stories briefly. The first is from about 50 years ago, and that was a very famous case in Canaan County, the capital of West Virginia, in which one school board member, a conservative activist, started to protest against a new set of literature textbooks. And some of the themes you'll recognize. She said she thought these textbooks were un-American, they were anti-Christian, and tellingly, they didn't use terms like critical race theory. But she said that having the students read the work of militant black authors, people like Eldridge Cleaver, George Jackson, she argued that reading these black authors in these literature textbooks would turn white kids racist. And we certainly hear some of that rhetoric today. Another echo is that national organizations, at the time, the Heritage Foundation got its start in this Canaan County protest. The third worrisome echo is that the protests got very violent. Two people were shot, one person was pushed down the stairs. The Board of Education building was exploded in a dynamite bomb, and elementary school buildings were firebombed. So unfortunately, some of what we're seeing today does have these long echoes 50 years ago. Going further back, though, into the 1920s, I think there's an even more illustrative example of the kind of laws that we're seeing, what Rachel described as these laws with very vague wording. So in the 1920s, and this is how I spent my 20s, the 1920s legislators in 53 states, they passed a total, or they considered a total of 21 bills, and two of them in the US Congress for Washington DC. And ostensibly, five of them passed total. And ostensibly, these were about the science of evolution. But I'd like to share what the language was, and I think while you see, you'll see why I think it's so resonant with today. They said it was about evolution, but really it was a much broader attempt to control schools. So in Kentucky, for example, a 1922 bill, not only would it ban the teaching of Darwinism, atheism, agnosticism, or evolution, but citizens, any two citizens could accuse a teacher of teaching any of these things. Agnosticism, I don't even know what that would mean to teach agnosticism. If a teacher was accused, the school board had five days to interrogate, and if they were guilty, they'd be fired. The US Congress's bill, which was supposedly about evolution for DC teachers, it said that no teacher could teach, quote, "disrespect for the Holy Bible" or that ours is an inferior government. And last example, 1927 West Virginia bill would have banned, quote, "nefarious matter", nefarious matter from public schools. Now, if you're like me, the first thing that pops in your head is like, well, what first, what's nefarious, like literally dictionary-wise, what does it mean? And then politically, what does that mean? Who gets to pick what counts as nefarious? And back then, the vagueness was not a mistake. It was why these bills had political power. People could fill them with whatever ideas they thought were nefarious. And I think we're seeing the same thing today. So I'll stop with those two examples. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much, and I know we're going to invite some of the panelists to engage, but I had one quick question as you were talking that I thought, you said historically conservatives often lose the battles, even if they maybe they win the war of fear. Why, why do they, why have they, do they typically lose? Like, what is it about these campaigns that tend to not work? Because it was my impression that actually some, the courts kind of not ruled in favor of teachers in ways that I think many people might hope that they did.
I'm really glad you asked that, Rachel, because I don't mean to imply that nothing bad happens from these efforts or that conservative activism is just squelched. It's not. Careers are lost, people get shot, you know, so they, they do cause damage. They cause a lot of fear and questioning in what teachers are going to do. So, and these laws were in effect for a long time. The anti-evolution laws weren't overruled till 1968. So I don't mean to downplay the strength of the power. What I do mean to say is that politically, in the long term, Americans tend to vote for better schools always, not worse schools. So it's politically self-defeating to oppose good science, even though it seems like it has these, you know, these bills that are in effect. But those bills had a great cost too, you know. States like Tennessee, Mississippi, and Arkansas became laughingstocks, and people, you know, would often move businesses, like we've seen with current bills as well. So I don't mean to say that there aren't negative impacts from this activism and legal activism and legislative activism. I mean to say in the long run, it tends to lose because people, parents especially, don't like the thought, and they vote on this, that their kids are going to get worse education.
One other follow-up, and then, and then I think I'd invite some of our panelists maybe to ask some questions, but is there anything about what we're seeing now that does strike you as different? That does seem sort of unfamiliar historically?
Sure. Well, one of them is the sheer cynicism that we're seeing now. Nobody in the 1920s said what Chris Ruffo is saying today, which is, I don't care what critical race theory actually is. I just want to, I just want to mess things up and see what happened to the other side. I mean, that's just a new kind of cynicism. I also can't help but point out that we've never had these kind of activist movements in the months following a presidential attack on Congress. You know, I mean, that's new, and that's shocking, and that's important. And so I do think that context always matters. And so things that I think in the 1970s, people would think were impossible, we've reached a lot of those boundaries. And so I do think there's a lot that's very different today, and in every case through history.
Thank you. Do, do any of the other panelists want to ask Professor Lottz any questions?
I'd love to hop in and ask a question. Professor, what about the role of social media? That's very different from past cases, right?
It totally is. But I think it's not a question of amount, but of speed. So for example, the, in the, throughout the 20th century, the thing that made pundits pundits, especially on the fringes, was not what they wrote, but who they wrote it to. So pundits in the 20th century would buy one another's, when they were retiring, they would sell their mailing lists. Those mailing lists were valuable political tools. So the names luckily have disappeared, but Alan Zoll was a very well-known right-wing pamphleteer in the 40s. He sold his mailing list to Billy James Hargis, who wanted these names that he could immediately appeal to. And the pamphlets that were sent to these mailing lists were really hate-filled screeds. And the different mailing lists were tailored to different ways. So yes, it's different in the speed and the ease with which it can be done. But the, the idea of organizations through groups and different groups having really hate-filled stuff that they would send to one another and circulate, that's the same. And so the tempo has changed, and the ease of access has changed. But the notion of, you know, these groups that feed off one another's real negative energy and get more and more extreme based on media is certainly a 20th century tradition too.
I have a question, which is, you know, you mentioned that, and you've been talking about how what we're seeing now is something that we've seen sort of repeatedly throughout history, but that ultimately, over time, backfires. You know, looking at the past, what do you think has been the mechanism where these efforts began to backfire? Like, what kind of things happened that precipitated that?
Yeah, thank you. That's a great one. And even in the most extreme of 20th century cases, I'll use Virginia's 1950s massive resistance movement as what I think of as the best example. So Virginia in 1954, in the aftermath of the Brown v. Board decision, the state famously closed its public schools rather than integrate them. The state of Virginia, instead of banning the law of the land, just turned every public school into a private school legally so that they could remain segregated. Now, the people who fought back against that, or sorry, lots of people fought back against that, but the most successful counter protesters were white segregationists in Virginia. And they tended to organize as mothers, white mothers organizing to save public education. They weren't nice, I mean, they might be nice people. They weren't, you know, politically admirable. They were segregationists, but they were so dedicated to the idea of public education, not as, as, you know, something for everyone, but something for their kids, a benefit for their kids, that they successfully fought back against the privatization of Virginia's public schools. Again, I don't mean that they're heroes. I mean that sheerly out of self-interest, the, the good of public schooling for people's families has tended to combat conservative activism that fights against things like AP classes, like we're seeing in today's politics, that fights against access for people's own children to educational goods that they consider valuable. So you don't have to be a hero to fight against some of these conservative policies, and that's what we've seen in the past.
And so I think we have about two minutes left, and I, this might not be a question for two minutes, but we'll just put it out because it came from the audience. Do you have any sort of thoughts on, have there been any sort of patterns that you noticed or observed in your research about ways in which some of these past efforts from conservative activists have failed? Have they made any similar mistakes? Or have opponents used any sort of similar tactics that you think might be of interest to people to hear about?
I'm not sure if I'm understanding, meaning what have some successful moves against these been in the past?
Yeah, either successful moves against them or, or shared stumbles that they've made.
Sure. Well, the shared stumbles have been pretty similar to what we're seeing now when the line has been breached, and instead of fighting for better schools, some activists have said today have done things like, we don't want kids in Virginia to have access to these, you know, the best books, like Beloved, for example. That, I think, is a huge political stumble. And in the past, similar things happened with, you know, other textbook issues. So textbooks that have been attracted the fury of some conservative activists, but have come from the top schools, Harvard, Columbia, have produced these textbook series, and conservative activists have fought against them. Parents consistently have said, no, no, we want the best books from the best scholars. Science, history, literature, we want our kids to have those best materials. And every time that the conservatives have pushed too hard against kids having the best materials, they've ended up, not in the short run necessarily, but in the long run, they've been the losers. So the winning strategy, to my mind, is not to fight the issue that is being raised. Don't say, you know, okay, let's talk about critical race theory, because that's not what schools are actually teaching. Instead, fight against the confusion that makes it possible to foment the fear that people fear for their kids' safety and for their kids' well-being. Parents want the best for their kids. Confusion makes it seem like the best books are somehow dangerous for them. That's what we can fight against.
I think, I think this is a great segue to our, we're going to switch to Judd. He's going to tell us a little bit about some of the reporting he's been doing on this topic. He's been following the bills and some of the money behind some of these things.
Yeah, thanks so much, Rachel. My name's Judd Legum. I'm an independent journalist. I write a newsletter called Popular Information. And what I've been doing mostly from the beginning of this year is looking at how these school board issues have come from the periphery to really at the center of the national political conversation. And it didn't happen like that by accident or through a purely organic uprising of angry parents. Certainly, there are some parents that are angry, but they are responding to what has been a very organized and very well-funded effort to politicize schools and school boards. And what we saw, starting with the beginning of this year, is the formation of a constellation of groups that do not disclose their funding that emerged overnight and did not emerge in a skeletal fashion, but as full-fledged organizations with very aggressive efforts to file FOIAs, to get public, to get information about school curriculums that are organizing large presences at the school boards themselves, that have very sophisticated media operations. One of the ones, just for example, an organization called Parents Defending Education was founded in March, is run by a woman who has essentially spent her entire career working for the Koch Political Network in a variety of capacities, and overnight became essentially a constant presence on Fox News and played a major role in how school boards became such a central issue in the Virginia gubernatorial election. The essentially critical moment in that race, which was during the debate when Terry McAuliffe was asked about two books that are telling the stories of queer youth and were described as propaganda, I mean, as pornography. That entire issue and controversy was birthed by Parents Defending Education, and they took that moment and expanded it out, and it really became the center of Youngkin's campaign. Many of the people involved in Parents Defending Education were also involved in the Youngkin campaign. So you have a confluence of politicians that are keying in on these issues, very sophisticated political operatives, and then, yes, through their efforts, they are motivating parents. And real parents are showing up at the school board, very angry, but they're responding to a message that's being delivered to them over and over and over and over again. So, and that's just one group. And one of the things we don't really know about these groups, there's very little. We learn, we, we have very little access to how nonprofit groups operate in this country, but we really know very even less about new nonprofit groups. So these groups that were founded in January, February, March of 2021, we're not even going to get basic information about, you know, how they're spending their money, who their top staff people are, how much they're getting paid, until the end of 2022, after the midterm elections. So there are these new groups, they're very well-funded, we're going to know very little about them. And then just briefly, I'll just say that from there, looking at how this controversy was created, we've now seen an evolution where we're going just from sort of fomenting controversy and anger and concern about what's going on in schools to seeing actual bills, which are usually described as anti-critical race theory bills, but actually, when you look at the text, are really about how teachers can talk about history and race and the history of slavery. And we're now starting to see the impact of those bills. You know, there was a bill that was passed in Tennessee. It has 11 different, very abstract concepts that teachers can't integrate into their lessons. And a group there, another, that was another dark money group, one of the local chapters filed a complaint with the Department of Education saying that second graders shouldn't be permitted to read a kid's book, I think it was by Scholastic, for beginning readers, about Martin Luther King, because that book represented critical race theory, which was banned by this bill. That particular complaint was not taken up as valid because of some technical issues with the complaint. They essentially jumped the gun. They talked about the use of this book last school year, but because of how recently these bills have been passed, it only applies to the current school year. But they may very well be successful in the months ahead. So we're watching this evolve very rapidly from the creation of the groups, the fomenting of all this energy and anger and focus around the school boards, to now starting to see it be implemented. And that's why I was asking Professor Lottz about, about this a little bit, because I was interested, maybe we're at the point where now this is going to start to backfire, because we are starting to see some things happening within the classroom or people trying to make changes in the classroom that I can't imagine would be as popular as sort of the more abstract notions. So anyway, I could go on and on, but I better end today.
I would love to ask, ask you about specific groups. Like Heritage Foundation is one that has tried for decades to get the kind of traction that it is getting with this, not of its doing. So like in the 80s, it was secular humanism. In the 70s, it was these textbooks like in Canaan County. And now Heritage Foundation is just one example of a group that is well-established, but you know, not dark money, but a sort of established group that is, I think, trying to make political hay for an existing platform based on this sudden surge of interest in terms like critical race here. I'd love to hear what you think about existing, well-funded, well-known groups like that who are also trying to get in this game.
Yeah, and I think, you know, Heritage is playing a major role. They just released an open letter this week that was signed by a number of these newer groups, but led by Heritage, saying that, you know, we see, we saw over 2021, there were about 10 of these anti-critical race theory bills, and this letter was really encouraging all the conservatives in the state legislatures to spend 2022 passing more bills and essentially demanding more rigor in those bills. I mean, I think that's what we're going to see in 2022. You had New Hampshire pass a bill in 2021. Now they've got a whole new set of bills that will impose even more restrictions on teachers. So I think groups like Heritage are playing a role. And part of the reason why they haven't, in my view, taken the lead is that these newer groups have a more credible claim to represent parents, whereas, you know, people know that Heritage, the Heritage Organization represents the conservative establishment. And I do agree with Rachel that you can't dismiss the groups. And I think that that's one thing that happened in Virginia that, you know, I think people are going to try not to repeat, is that it was very, it was a very dismissive response to the energy. But the energy was real. That doesn't mean that it wasn't part of a strategy. It doesn't mean there wasn't money behind it, but there were real, real parents, and it, and it hits into sort of, it's a way of essentially repackaging, as you alluded to, a lot of these cultural complaints that have kind of gotten tired and worn out. But, but it revives them, and by putting it under the mantle of parents, it gives them a legitimacy and a universality that makes it much harder to dismiss. It's almost, in my view, kind of a reformulation of the Tea Party movement, but a better one. Because while the Tea Party was just people who were kind of loosely defined, kind of angry, going to places, these are parents that care about their children. And that's how they're being framed, and that's a much more powerful political tool than just random angry people. People tend to want to validate and understand why parents care about their children. And when you frame a concern, whether it's about critical race theory or whether it's about... A concern, whether it's about critical race theory or whether it's about masks in schools or or all the different issues that were kind of hung on this. And you frame it as around, this is a matter of parents who are carrying out their children, that's an extremely powerful political cudgel. To wield and it's being wielded pretty successfully.
Dr. White, I I wanted to ask uh Dr. White, um like in your work, when you're when you're helping organizations deal with this and you and you encounter these sort of objections like. What 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 do you uh sort of suggest, like how how have you navigated that, these kind of um this energy as it. Uh, as an euphemism, some maybe?
I think there's the broad um approach, um and then there's also just kind of like, how do you understand? The type of rhetoric that is actually being engaged and so to the broad approach, what I mean by that is that, yes. Um, there is this conservative mobilization that is now kind of focused around CRT, but it is yet just the latest iteration. Of a consistent and steadfast movement um in terms of our racial politics in this nation. And I think what those who are on the left um struggle with is that in this particular moment, there is a more reactive stance. And I think that that is coming from a place of what needs to be mitigated right now in terms of, you know, the the push with. Introductions of what we're now calling the Equity Gags in in essence, right, at least the anti CRT bills. And I think the broad focus should not only be, right, like what are we fighting against, but a real focus on what we're fighting for. So I think that also is um needs to be added and elevated in a conversation. Uh, because it's not just do we, you know, get these types of gags unturned. But it is that since the sixties, we have not had a true multicultural diverse curriculum in our our K-12 schools. And so I think it's also the importance of us focusing on what we're fighting for in addition to what we're fighting against. Um, and I think the other piece of it, so that's the broad piece. The practical sort of um how that is done, I think one piece is just understanding. The real sophisticated way that the conservative mobilization um in this area has really clung to civil rights discourse. Really clung to, you know, MLK in a way that is used to deflect. Um, this act is a form of racial prejudice, that's saying we're all one race and saying that, you know, we should all be treated by. On the content of our character and not the color of our skin as a way to um focus on um this as it that. The teaching of the fullness of American history is racism racist against white people and we know that is not the case. Um, this call for the facts, teach the facts and not feelings is really just a mask. Um, and really not getting to the root of what we're actually talking about, what is being taught CRT is a theory that is not taught in schools. We're talking about the real push to teach the fullness of American history in schools, what we have is a very Eurocentric lens. Of our nation's history that marginalizes, glosses over, completely erases the experiences of BIPOC groups. And not just their experiences, um that often gets touched upon, you know, on the flags or holidays or months types of weeks. But certainly their significant contributions to building the nation and that we have today and so I think. Those two things are how we not only address, but begin to really unravel. The actions that we are are taking upon ourselves to really um both mitigate, right, and shift. This is not just a political shift at the state level, but it has to be matched with the the individual engagements that we have. And school boards and individual schools.
I I think, um, thank you for for that, I think there's a lot there and uh Rebecca, did you wanna ask a question? We can also go back to you later, but.
Yeah, no, I I uh I'm hope it's working now, but um I actually just wanted to add too that I think. Part of what we need to be thinking about, especially when it comes to public education, is that this is our largest public good, right, public good. It has um been an effort towards increasingly serving all students, right, throughout history. But we've often thought of it as, you know, a classroom, a collective good and our past thirty years of policy plus. Have really increasingly told parents, you know, that you should be focused on your individual child, right, individual choice, you know. Charter schools and choice vouchers, um scholarship tax-saving accounts, many of these policies and what we. Tell parents now is that you should be trying to find the best education for your child, not how can we. You know, fund the best education for our children and I think that this parents' right movement really. Builds on that and we need to recognize that this is part of a broader strategy in public education. To sort of move away from the idea of education as a public good and more towards education being a private good. That it's just about what can I get for my particular child um and this sort of competitive advantage idea. Versus what is good for our, all of our students and how can we collectively contribute to that? And in which case then your parents' individual rights have to be buffered up against other parents' individual rights and that's a very different. Orientation, I think, especially when it comes to school boards that we need to keep in mind and we've seen that break down in these conversations where. We don't approach it as, you know, what can we do collectively, we approach it as what do I want for my kid?
Okay, um, well, I think that we uh we're gonna move on now, um although I think as we. As we talk, these questions are all overlapping, so we're kind of gonna zoom, you know, weaving back in through um. Through it, uh, we're gonna actually move backwards to a Dr. White, um, I know you just shared some really great thoughts, but I didn't want to. Miss the opportunity for your formal uh prepared remarks, if there was anything else that you, you know, wanted to add. Uh, and I know this is going a little bit out of the order that we planned, but um, you know, the space is yours for. Uh, sharing your perspective from how you've been coming at these issues.
Yeah, thank you, um, and definitely thank you to Invisible Westchester um for inviting me, it's just a pleasure to be a part of this. Really wonderful mix of panelists um to talk on this topic, uh I will kind of be nimble here. And and not kind of go through all of my uh remarks and kind of lean into the questions of where people really want to discuss, but one. I will highlight um. Broadly that, again, and I I I touched on this a bit earlier, in the way that our K-12 curricular system. Um, has been designed uh from its inception as we think about the modern school is rooted, right, like. Movement eighteen hundreds and so since that time, um, we have never had a really diverse story of America. And in fact, it had been established to the question of, you know, what will be the story of America that we can all really garner around. There's been no question of that, um, and even with the civil rights movement, even with the multicultural education movement thereafter. Um, that began to question it in a a broader scale way, it started before then, but most so certainly at scale during the eighties and nineties. Um, that we've never really had those conversations and so when folks are talking about the culture wars, which does kind of hit on different topics. But education being one of them, that it is this underlying unresolved question. And so I really wanna kind of historicize this, that we are seeing a new form of an old question. And so I think that it is important for us to really, again, to this notion of what we're fighting for, begin to talk about that and that's across the aisle. This is an American question, um, it's not a left conservative, a Tea Party, a Democrat, whatever. Um, issue, it is certainly bipartisan and so I think that's important to name here. Um, I wanna just piggyback on um something Professor Jacobson had mentioned, just in this notion, because it's tied into. That the framing that we have about education, which is a public good, but certainly there are a lot of Americans that approach it as. Education for my child, an individual decision rather than for our children. I wanna name that in that framing and I think that's underlying with just the indivi- individualistic nature of our nation. That there's a both and, you still, you can support, right, a diversified and fuller story of American history. That is still good for your child and our children, there's not an either or, right, I think it's also dispelling this notion that. Conservatives have really done well to cause this confusion and real um uproar that as if. We talk about and name the depth of American racism and the legacy that we still see at present, as if it is going to harm white children. Right, BIPOC and white children benefit from learning about race in this country, benefit from having a deep racial literacy. There is benefit for all children, it is good for all children, not only in their emotional intelligence, not only in their empathy building. But certainly for our democracy, we see that when children begin to learn at all ages, this is not just a high school thing, but across our K-12 scale. That they benefit, right, like from engaging within these deep discussions, not only about history, but especially about tying it to the present day. And so it really begins to inform their civic engagement and when we think about civic participation is so core to our democracy. Um, and so I really wanna highlight that here, that often gets overlooked in these discussions, that is, it's a both and and it's harming white children. And it's really important to lift up that it's beneficial for our all children and our ecosystem as a democracy.
Thank you, yes, I think that uh the the fear that if. Children learn a more detailed, fuller picture of slavery, then they will no longer have. Pride in the United States, like, I think that is a very powerful motivating message, but it's actually not backed by. Really any like evident, like, it's not actually, it's not a fact, it's just a powerful motivating. Uh, fear, um, uh, does, uh, we have, we have some uh co- questions from the audience. That I, you know, might put out to to the panel, um, I think one of them, uh, you know. Listeners of this call might be sort of in agreement with some of the things being said, um, do you or do any of the panels have sort of advice for. School boards who sort of have to cool are sort of, you know, sitting there and more angry parents come and and are. Or sort of saying these things like, oh, I my child, you know, is being made to feel guilty, is being made to feel uncomfortable, like. What, you know, what are you doing, so do you guys have any thoughts on that?
I think it's helpful to understand who school board members are, so about half of school board members say that they get into becoming a school board member. Because they wanna improve the education um for their children and about another quarter say that they want to. You know, do a community service, right, so most folks that get into becoming a school board are not used to running sort of. High-profile campaigns, um, there's very little school board training. Um, they really are meant to be citizen representatives and I think that it's important to remember that we've provided them with very little support. And trying to handle what now have become um heated national discussions, so I think one of the first things that we really need to focus on. Is um increasing school board training and school boards have not been on the radar screen of a lot of different groups. And I think the more support that we can provide school board members, um, the more they will be able to be responsive and more proactive. And they're coming off a really tough period, so I think that just only adds to the challenge right now.
Rebecca, on that, on that point, do you find that ha- has there been a point when um school boards are seen as. Overly partisan, like, is there a risk of of school boards, uh, you know, I don't know how much school boards are already victims, sort of. Partisan culture war type things or if they're seen as more nonpartisan, I maybe, it probably varies regionally, but.
So, no, about ninety-five percent of school board elections are nonpartisan, so people do not run as a Democrat or Republican, they ran, they run as a community member. Um, uh, school board elections have traditionally been held off-cycle, trying to keep politics out. As if you can keep politics out, I would argue you can't, um, but it has meant that these are often low visibility affairs and so. You know, oftentimes, school board members get elected based on about, you know, sometimes as low as single digits, sometimes as high as maybe into the twenty percent. Range of people actually voting, um, so these have been pretty low turnout affairs, which is why they then become easily captured. By special interest groups because we're not always paying attention to them, um, they don't get a lot of media coverage, it's great to see folks. Uh, like you now reporting on it, but, you know, we've lost a lot of local media and school board elections are just not covered. And so it's hard for people to get the information that they need to really know what's going on. Um, I I don't think the issue is about them becoming partisan, I think it's um the the role of outside money and I can talk about that certainly at length. Um, but I think money um is really changing and the research that I've done shows that it really does change. Um, the type of elections as well as then what happens after people are elected.
Uh, well, we would love to have you expand more on on that topic and your research and and, you know, the role of. Uh, both disclosed and undisclosed money that is shaping the election, um, I think sometimes people think. The most well-funded candidate always wins, although that doesn't seem to happen, so I'm curious sort of what you observe and and how, where money maybe is most. Influential or powerful and and maybe where it is less so.
Yeah, so, um, you know, I I often say that when I started looking at school boards, I nobody was interested in what I had to say. Um, and so now I I'm, you know, getting lots of calls, which is really exciting. Um, but it used to be that nobody was really interested in school boards, they were really interested in, you know, what are national leaders saying about education? What are state leaders saying about education and I think that um people who work to really change education realize that. That local leaders remain really powerful and really influential and and shaping what actually happens. Um, and so in the early, you know, twenty-ten, we started seeing twenty-twelve, my colleagues and I started seeing all these reports that. Um, big donors like Reed Hastings, CEO of Netflix, um, Lorraine Powell Jobs, you know. Uh, wife of uh Steve Jobs of Apple, you know, really high-profile people were giving money to local school board elections. Across the country and this was really puzzling to us because nobody cared about school board elections, why all of a sudden are these. You know, really big names giving money and giving money in a seemingly coordinated fashion. So candidates across the country were getting money from the same set of people. Um, and I think that, you know, part of it was a strategy of pretty low cost for potential high payoff. So, school board elections, um, it, let's see, about eighty-seven percent of school board candidates. Report that they spend less than five thousand dollars on their election, so these are really local elections, right? I often refer to them as kitchen table elections, friends and family pulling together to make this happen. Um, I remember as a kid walking around and leafing in the neighborhood for a for a neighbor that was running for school board. Um, this, these are not, you know, uh, professionalized campaigns, these are often really small, local. Um, friends and family sort of activities, but when these, when these big donors start to come in and certainly it varies by by place. But in the five cities that we studied between two thousand nine and two thousand fourteen, we just saw. Over a nine hundred percent increase in terms of what was spent on elections, so while money doesn't necessarily. Um, as you said, guarantee a win, it still has a lot of impact. And so I think that's really what's important to consider, especially, you know, in Westchester County as you're thinking about running for school board. Is, you know, what are, you know, what is the reality of these sort of going to look like as these large national donors get involved? So, the, while success of winning the election is mixed, what we did find is that. Um, these elections became far more expensive and that often meant that those people that had funding could run very professionalized campaigns. Some people were hired, are able to hire a whole team uh to be their campaign manager, their, you know, their funding manager, their. Um, messaging, they were able to hire professional strategists who were able to help them get out their message, they were able to buy. Voting rolls to find out who is voting in school board elections and who is not, so they could really target their. Um, their advertising and this sort of thing, so these were different kinds of election of campaigns than had traditionally been run. And what that also meant is that those people who didn't have access to that funding had a really hard time trying to get noticed. Trying to compete um and trying to get their messages out. Um, we also found that it really changed what people talked about, so when we were looking at this, it was, um, you know, twenty oh-nine to twenty-fourteen. And the issues were really charter schools, teacher tenure and these big nationalized discussions, which is just what's happening now, nationalized discussions. And more local concerns couldn't compete, so one candidate. So one candidate was very concerned about adult education for the large population of immigrant students in their community. And this candidate was very frustrated that she couldn't get anybody to pay attention to this issue because all anybody wanted to talk about was charter schools, teacher tenure, and these large nationalized debates. So it really does change what gets talked about. The other thing that we found is that candidates, because they recognized they needed to have this money in order to compete, started to take more and more polarized stances because they felt like they had to in order to attract that funding. As one candidate said, you know, nobody wants to give to somebody who says, well, I kind of think this and I kind of think that. Instead, they really wanted to give to candidates who said, I'm a hundred percent for charter schools, or I'm absolutely against teacher tenure. And so what ended up happening is you see both candidates and then once elected, board members taking more polarized stances. So this led to more conflict on the board, definitely stronger sort of stances where people are fighting back and forth. As one candidate shared with us, they said, it's absolutely a definite divide, very much like our federal government. You're where you're a Democrat or Republican. But now in the school boards, you're either a charter school advocate or you're a union advocate. And when you get in the board, nobody can cross that line, and it's a really bad thing. And so you end up getting, you know, this more polarized, again, rather than being about community, right? And what's best for us in our particular context, it becomes about these stances as you're looking to your next election already, right after you're elected. And I think that, you know, really what's happening to today, while the issues are not the same, it's not charter schools. It's, it is again, these well organized interests that are able to use their funding networks and find local partners that then, you know, are able to increasingly shape the conversations. And so while today it's about vaccines, parent rights, masking, as well as critical race theory, this is not the first time that school boards have really become embroiled in these battles. And so I think that the polarization that we found is very similar to what the polarization that's happening now, especially around the work that I've been doing on critical race theory. And so citizens in the work that I've done that identify as Democrats are far more likely than Republicans to report that they think schools should be teaching more about race and racism, teaching about the continued impact of historically racist policies, and think that schools should be talking about current issues that are related to race. In my most recent research here in Michigan, it really suggests that these disagreements and the widely circulating misinformation campaigns are really eroding public trust to the point where they no longer trust teachers, their local teachers, to be making these decisions. And I think that that's probably what I what I would hope that we would discuss too, is the way that this erodes our trust in our teachers and therefore eventually erodes sort of, you know, the very foundation of public education.
Thank you, Dr. Gibson. I think that's, that laid out a lot of like excellent context on school boards and how to think about them and and national versus local. I wanted to ask Judd a follow-up question based on some of that. Doctor touched on disinformation. She was also touching on groups that come in. We have a lot of, we have a big New York audience. Wondering if you have any thoughts on some of the groups that might be active in the Westchester area or in New York right now? I think, I think there's just a lot of curiosity amongst listeners to this about sort of how to, how to process sort of groups that are organizing and making connections as, I think, I think Dr. Gibson did a good job of saying they they they're working to shape the discourse, which might be drowning out some other voices or topics that would otherwise be elevated.
There's a variety of groups that are active. There are some of these national groups that are establishing chapters, I'm sure, in New York and in the Westchester area, but also all around the country. Groups like No Left Turn in Education, Parents Defending Education, which which I alluded to earlier. Moms for Liberty is one that has been that is establishing chapters all around the country. So you're likely to find people involved in those efforts. A lot of these groups have very similar tactics. They're involved in identifying very specific parts of the curriculum, which they will use to represent, symbolize the curriculum itself. So picking out one book, one lesson, one phrase, one image, and having that stand for the entire scope of the curriculum. So in Tennessee, what we've seen is these groups objecting to a book because it included a partial image of a Norman Rockwell painting, which had a partial racial slur in that image of a painting. And to say that now the kids are being exposed to all of this course language. So, you know, and I think, you know, so I think that you'll, you're likely to see a variety of groups, but the tactics are are likely to be, likely to be similar. And you, I think, will then see, you know, I think part of this is that it, there's a very symbiotic relationship between the groups, the issues they're bringing up in front of the school board, and then the issue that local, regional, and candidates that are running for national office in the area are picking up on and incorporating their campaigns. Because I think ultimately, this is just as much of a political strategy as it is a strategy to fundamentally change school curriculum. So I think that's another thing to to keep an eye out for.
I also want to add, and I appreciated that, you know, Adam sort of shared that this is not the first time that we've been through this in education. But I think the question always is, what's different now? And people brought up social media and the speed. But I also think it's important to point out that different groups yet have access to very different information. So while in the the survey that we did here in Michigan, Democrats and Republicans report, you know, the same types of sources of information. But when we asked them what they were hearing about critical race theory, and my research team and I had tracked eight different statements that were common in inaccurate statements that were common amongst the discourse around, the national discourse around critical race theory. And what we found was that more than half of the Republicans in our survey said that they had heard all eight, whereas just eighteen percent of Democrats had heard all eight. And so there's, not only is there a lot of misinformation, but the what they're hearing is very different. And so I think part of what school districts need to do and what school board members need to do is, to the extent that they can, is to get everybody in the in the room and try to just do a little bit of, you know, old fashioned education. Let's, let's try to lay out some points that we all can know because we think we all know what we're talking about. But we actually are listening to very different sources. And and this is a big nut to crack. Like, I I don't mean to make it sound easy at all. But I think at a very fundamental level, as long as we continue to live in these different bubbles, it's very hard for us to come together and have a conversation.
I I'm going to just jump in, hi, Shannon, back just to to transition to the actions point. So I'm glad that you talked about needing to bring people together to counter the disinformation. I mean, that's a huge part of this. Judd, I think you wrote about how the the Republicans in Virginia basically funded a disinformation machine there. Can you talk about that a little bit? Because I think this, just to give some more context around what we're actually fighting, fighting against.
Yeah, I mean, I think that that really one of the central issues in the campaign was that, you know, there were these pornographic books available in libraries and that if Terry McAuliffe had not vetoed legislation, these books wouldn't be available to kids. But actually, in that case, the the legislation didn't even involve library books. It involved curriculum, things that were in the classroom itself, so it wouldn't have applied. And secondly, it was a situation where any parent essentially could have vetoed the book. And as we came to know later, it was really, it was really driven by a woman who wanted to exclude Toni Morrison's book, Beloved, from the classroom. So what could have been, or what what really shouldn't have been an issue because it wasn't based on fact, was then it kept going and building and became really dominant. You know, I live in Washington DC, so I saw all the ads. And I can tell you, in the weeks before the election, this was all you were seeing. I mean, literally every ad had a clip from this debate. So it it goes to sort of what I was saying. You know, the the groups themselves, they're not taking a sort of fair-minded and holistic look at school curriculums. They're going to pick out a very specific micro item and use that to represent it. That's why the funding really comes in and is is critical because they have people who are extremely skilled. And I don't think there's anything wrong with this because I mean, I file a lot of FOIOS myself. So I'm not trying to say that that there's anything untoward about this. But collecting as much information as possible from schools, from teachers, getting this all, sifting through it and seeing what is that that we can point out. Because they're not really ever going to find a lesson on critical race theory. That's not something that is going to be happened in K through twelve schools. I actually, I I went to law school and I learned about it there. And it was quite, quite challenging topic to 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 handle in law school. You're not going to have it in third grade. But they are able, obviously, if you if you sift through, not every lesson plan in any school is going to be perfect. So if you look through enough, you will find something that probably is not a great lesson. You know, that that does happen in schools. And these groups are really able to take that and weaponize it. So I think that all candidates and and ultimately the communities themselves need to be much more rigorous about their understanding of the facts and how the facts that are presented fit into a a larger, a larger picture.
Jeanette, how do you think we should fight the disinformation machine?
I think to the notion of, I know there was a question in the chat about school boards. And I think the ways that we engage school board elections and the candidates that we support is hugely important. Electing more BIPOC candidates in those spaces is important. So is lending the research. So I'll kind of hit two of the questions. One of them were someone had asked about for school board members that are facing sort of this vitriolic rhetoric around, that are really talking about white fear, right? Like, having such a curriculum would really be a detriment, right, to my child. And I think if we also lean to the research, right, around some of what I talked about earlier, about what are the impacts of this, which scholars have for years, right? Really studied this in the K-12 and higher education space, about how this really, really benefits all students is one. So leaning to the research. And then also thinking about the racial diversity, as well as just the broader diversity of the candidates that we're electing in school boards. Talked about earlier, other planets, panelists have named how overwhelmingly white, right, they are, right? And so really thinking about, the research has proven that BIPOC candidates within school boards are bringing up these issues, right, before CRT becomes a national thing in school board elections. They are thinking about the diversity of of the curriculum and bringing that to the board so that it's codified. When we're, we're talking now in a reactive place. But really, it's also the position now is how do we get people in the room and at the table that are going to proactively put together those policies that can, right, begin to mitigate and and right, also proactively set up the curriculum guides, right, like the support for the teachers, the the professional development, all of those layers, the administrative professional development that really get to supporting the questions and issues that principals, that teachers are questioning now, right? So I think it's also that work that needs to be done.
Adam, what are your thoughts about bringing in different school board candidates and how to recruit people? I mean, those are a lot of the questions. Jeanette was right. I mean, there are people who are like, I'm on a school board and I'm struggling and we need concrete answers. We need concrete steps. What are they? What would be your advice?
Well, I agree with Dr. White that one thing to do is to change the the pronouns. You know, conservative activists talk about our America and the real America. And step number one is to say, well, we are all the real America. We are all America. If you want to tell the story, the history of real America, that means the story of all Americans, not just this imaginary fever dream of a certain group of heroic white Christians, but the real story with all of the players involved. A second thing briefly is the the winning weapons on the right in these cases are confusion and fear. I think the winning weapons for all of us are focus on the real issues, focus on the fact that students are safe when they're learning, and focus on the fact that we all, really, we, really all, we all want high quality schools for our community's children.
And the messaging too, freedom. I mean, the kids have the right, they should have the freedom to learn. I mean, I think that sometimes we're scared of certain language like freedom and liberty, and we let the other side use those terms when we don't use them for our own advantage. Judd, what are your thoughts about that? Oh, Judd, you're you're muted again.
Could you repeat the question real quickly?
Sure, just the language. I mean, you just see that the that the other side likes to use like freedom, you know, parents' rights. And that our side in trying to be proactive with this, we seem to be scared of that kind of messaging. When when I believe and research has shown that it's actually effective, kids should have the freedom to learn and we should, we, you know, as parents should want what's the best for all of our kids. And that includes making education accessible to everyone, just not a select few. And so in studying the the messaging, it kind of gets back to the messaging because I think a lot of this does have to do with the messaging. I mean, what would be your suggestions for how you can flip the script? Because that's what a lot of people are asking. Well, how do we, how do we flip the narrative? What should we do? So that's my question.
I mean, I think there's there's sort of two aspects to this. And I think possibly people have gotten overly caught up in the first, which is to think, to talk about the reality of critical race theory, what it really is versus what people are saying that it is, and sort of explaining that. But I don't think that that really gets you toward a vision of what schools should be. And so I think transitioning to that positive vi- vision where school is a place where students are empowered to ask their teachers whatever questions they have and to talk about whatever issues are going on in their lives. It's a place where students should be empowered and free, you know, to to explore a whole variety of ideas. Because I think what we're seeing with the legislation is that this legislation is really designed to instill fear in teachers. And ultimately, to have teachers censure, censor their own, their own students. This was part of the issue that we saw in New Hampshire, where there's a bill that was initially called the divisive topics bill. And it had a whole list of things that teachers shouldn't discuss. But what a lot of teachers were saying is that, you know, they can, they can follow those rules. They can parse the bill and do the best they can. But students take a conversation, you know, in a classroom where their interests are. And they 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 are interested in things that might be controversial. And really, what this legislation is about is about disempowering these students and making them, you know, kind of hold, have to, have to bite their tongue. And so I think, you know, getting away from, or not, not necessarily that that these things are exclusive, but going beyond simply explaining that this is a misinformation campaign that is politically motivated, that's designed to serve a political purpose, and getting back towards what a vision of a functional school is and what it means to students. I think that can, that that could, that can help.
What, one last question to kind of wrap everything up because we're running out of time. I mean, again, there there are numerous questions from people who are serving on school boards or thinking about running for school boards. So this is one of the things, obviously, we want to encourage with this, with this forum, is that we would love to have people running. is that we would love to have people running for school board. Go for it. I mean, we need good people and we need people who are willing to do the hard work in the face of this adversity. But Adam, can you speak to, um, how some of these organizations, uh, and people can, can be helpful of the school board? I mean, because I think these people are saying, look, I'm in a hard place, I'm being intimidated. So what has history shown you that, that, and you talked about this a little bit earlier, that is successful? What would be a strategy that you would see would work right now to help people empower their own mem- school board members?
Well, yeah, historically, and I think Dr. Jacobson probably has a better, a better take on what, what school boards are, are doing right now. But historically, um, the thing that has worked is, uh, to focus on quality issues. Uh, uh, you know, as Judd's saying, parents, uh, it's not just teachers that are, are scared, although teachers are scared by these attacks, uh, parents are scared. So, uh, it's easy politics to say, um, it, you know, it's, it's Mayor Quimby level politics to say that, you know, bears are going to attack your children and I can stop them. Sorry, these are Simpsons references from the nineties, sorry. But, but that's, uh, it's, it, it, it's also, um, short-term success. If they're, you know, parents need to know that their kids are safe. When they, when they are learning good history, when they're learning good science, when they're learning good literature, kids are put in danger, uh, when they are, when they're, as you said, when their freedoms are taken to learn the very best, uh, of these subjects. So what's the winning line? The winning line is to not take a bill of goods, uh, that good history, good his, science, good literature is dangerous for your children. It's the opposite. Blocking that from your children is the real danger that parents need to be worried about.
Rebecca, what would you say is the effective strategy? A, to empower school board members who are serving and also to, to, um, help empower parents who are, um, themselves being perhaps intimidated or, uh, just don't know how to best advocate for their child in the, in the midst of what's going on?
So I think that, um, you know, as, as folks are considering running for school board and as communities are thinking about school board elections, the one, uh, really good side of outside money is that it does bring more attention to these elections. So I think though, that if communities can find ways to, um, sponsor local reporting that, uh, really covers all of the candidates, that provides a common source of information that is, you know, vetted but also respected, that can be really helpful. I think community groups that organize meetings that are open are really important so that again, then media will cover those, those events and be able to try to capture that discussion. And so I think that some of these things of getting back to that is, is really an important first step. I also think that, um, the, you know, local school boards, the state school boards association, the national school boards association, and quite frankly, I'd put it back on folks like me, to provide, university people to provide, um, support and training for all candidates as well as all elected school board members, so that they're able to do the best job they can as an ordinary citizen. Again, most of these people are not paid. This is something that they are volunteering to do. And we as a community, including the universities, need to support them in that role.
That's okay. Does anybody else have a final thought because we're out of time right now? I mean, I think this has been great. I think, again, to understand that this is a political movement is very important. I think, um, the history is, uh, super important, you know, tying into what's going on right now and, you know, ways to be proactive. Um, and so what we intend to do is for all the participants is to come up with a resource list because I know the panelists here, you have great bodies of work, um, as journalists and as writers and as researchers. So we want to share that, that out with everybody. So we will be sharing a resource list because there are ways to, uh, research and learn. And I want to thank you for all the work that you've done around this issue. Um, it was a super interesting discussion and everybody had really had interesting perspectives. So, uh, thanks for allowing me, Rachel, to come in in the end and, and pivot to the kind of the actions part. The actions part is, you know, that's the difficult work. And it's not easy, but I think, again, the more we can educate ourselves and not be scared or intimidated and, um, you know, band together, uh, we can be successful, you know, even in the face of the, all the dark money and, and, you know, the organizations that are behind this as we discussed. So I just want to thank everybody for a wonderful discussion. I want to thank everybody for, um, attending this forum tonight and it's been great. Jean Tel, I'm sorry, we can't hear you one last time. But you were tremendous. So thank you so much. Thank you, everyone.